All right, the agenda items for discussion, thirteen forty-nine ninety. Staff will present information regarding the FY twelve thirteen budgets for the city departments to include current operations, base budgets, and services provided. So we'll be looking at the fire, we'll look at the development services, I T S, parks and recreations, and they will all provide presentations on their current operations and budgets. So let's start with the Pa- Louisey, Deputy Fire Chief. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we'll be reviewing the fire department budget and some of our objectives that we have set for tonight. Strategy alignment, budget overview of the four major categories of the department, and then also looking at the supplementals for FY twenty thirteen, and then opportunities and challenges. Okay, for the strategic alignment, how we, the fire department aligns with the council's strategy. We looked at a lot of different areas, fiscal and resource management. Obviously, this year, we were fortunate enough to get some help in the telestaff, and which will help us track our staffing within the fire department and better able to deliver information on the staffing on a daily basis. So that's been up and running now for about a month, and so we're going to final configuration towards the end of this month, and hope to have that fully implemented and running full steam ahead towards middle of May. So we'll start to be able to get some of those reports out.
Great.
Also, the fire corps program, which is our volunteer program, that's been up and running, and a little bit later in my presentation, I'll talk about some of the hours that the volunteers have been helping us with. And then obviously, too, part of the fiscal and resource management is succession planning within the fire department. In the next few years, we'll have some turnover in our senior staff, as well as some other retirements within the department that will impact the department and we'll have to be planning for. And then with economic vitality, we've been working with finance on the impact fee updates, so that's currently ongoing at this point. Sense of community, working with HOA and trying to schedule the fire ops one-on-one program with the-
Can I go back to that just a moment, because this brought to mind. Once this is all incorporated, you know, and everybody has adjusted to this impact on us, are we going to get a report then that tells us that how it impacted the budget? I mean, because some of this, we have not really verified, right, from this change?
Yes, Mayor, the impact fee, that's a program, we're just now starting that.
Okay.
So it'll be sometime before we have results to council, as far as, right now, we're just going through what the costs are, the infrastructure improvement plan, so we're looking at some of the cost elements of that. Then that gets, but we are working with a consultant at this point to take us through building the impact fees. That will be coming back before council, it really would not take effect until next bu- the following budget year, what, July first?
Of fourteen.
Of fourteen, right.
Okay.
Yeah, the following year.
Okay, and when we do that, just to keep this in mind, I would like to see that go public, so that the public understands the change and what the decision-making, how it affected the cities. I want us to be proactive on letting people know what the legislature decided to change for the cities, and I want them to bear the burden, just as we are going to bear the burden as a city. So I just want to make sure, as you prepare this, you prepare it for the press, and for our communities, and we get this out in all of the different correspondence that we can do.
Yes, yes, Mayor. And the other part of that, just in terms of the communications, in addition to our public and the media, this is an interaction with the development community. So the stakeholders are engaged in this and helping define what the infrastructure improvement plan is as well, so want to make sure that they're very much a part of this process.
And we really appreciate that, the development group.
Yes.
So we thank them for that cooperation. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. And then sense of community, working with the HOA and trying to schedule that fire ops one-on-one class, and also getting out to the neighborhood meetings, working with Lily and our battalion chiefs in our fire companies and trying to get them out to the HOA meetings too. We've posted those on the fire calendar, that's internal within the fire department, so they know when those meetings are, and getting those crews out there before those meetings start. And one that we actually just started today, that's gonna be a lot of fun, we're working with Franklin Pierce, the physical therapy program-
That's great.
-on some injury prevention programs. And so today was the first day that we had the students in the stations working with some of our crews. So we're working on a press release for that, so that was some really good things. I know, talked to Terry Roberts, who is one of their professors over there, and she's very excited about this program. In the relationship, and we really feel like this is something that could go on for years, putting the students in with the firefighters, and really, other city workers as well. Quality of life, working with the city on benchmark analysis, and also looking forward to working on accreditation, but then also getting through the city gate management audit and assessment as well. Service delivery, working with West Valley Hospital, we just recently met with the new C E O, Stan Holm over there, who's a really neat man to work with. We're looking at some partnerships that we could do within the fire department and the hospital, because obviously, interacting with the patients in the field, their customers are our customers as well, so making sure that they get the right resources. One of those things that we, you know, one of the projects that we thought about is tying resources back into the hospital, whether it's social services, meals on wheels, or anything else that we can do to try to tie the patient back to the services that the hospital offers, so some really good partnerships there. Our record management program, customer satisfaction survey, that just kicked off this month. So on every call, the crews will have a self-addressed stamped comment card that they can drop into the mail. We're working with the, our firefighter union on that, and hopefully collect all that information through a database in fire administration, and be able to report out on that customer satisfaction survey, so kind of real-time stuff for us. Organizational capacity, training programs, supervisory programs, we continue to deliver those at a very high level on a frequent basis, working with the Community College on some of those different outreach programs that they have as well. And then lastly, communications, we're expanding our P I O team, Tanya Tanner and Russ Braden have been doing a really great job for us. Bill Bishop also helps us out as well. But now we're looking to expand that within each shift, so that they would have at least one or two people that would be available for the P I O team. So that training actually kicks off in May. Social media, we're up on Twitter, we're now on Facebook, so we're trying to just stay on top of that as much as we can. Teleconferencing or web conferencing is something that we wanted to start working with I T S on, so that the battalion chiefs can meet with their captains through teleconferencing at their stations or the crews. And then obviously, the labor management process has been going on for a while, so it's been going very well for us. Next slide is our org chart, and I did update the slide, and you have that in front of you now, so it reflects all the F T Es that are located within those four major divisions. For the four major divisions, we have the Office of the Fire Chief, we have the Operations Section, we have that professional standards, Support Services Division, and also Emergency Management. So, and those reflect the numbers that are currently within the fire department, for a grand total of one hundred and two.
Joe?
Paul, do you have any vacancies right now?
No, we just hired four new firefighters, they're lateral firefighters, so they come with experience to us, they will start on April fifteenth, so at this point.
Does that put you at full staff then?
Puts, yep, full staff. Next slide is the budget and personnel, it's more of just a breakdown by each division and the amount of monies allocated to those divisions. Fire department represents about sixteen percent of the overall city's operating budget, and obviously with most, like, most other departments, eighty percent of that is personnel-related. And again, that's a hundred and two personnel within the department right now, and then the rest is made up of the contractual and commodities within the department. Okay, so we'll look at each division now, the four major divisions, so the Office of the Fire Chiefs, some of the overall responsibilities there, management and oversight in all risk, emergency response department, ensures that all employees adhere to the highest standard of professionalism, management of the budget and department finances, provide customer service both internally and externally to our customers, and responsible for community and labor relations. Again, very highly skilled, well-trained staff within all of our divisions. The operationals branch is the ones that are the wheels on the ground, responding to calls on a daily basis. Within that group is the Fire Prevention Division, and then Emergency Services, or the crews that are responding to the calls. In the Fire Prevention Division, we've had some change recently, and so, right now, essentially, we are taking anything after the certificate of occupancy within the city. So those annual inspections to keep our citizens safe, but also the firefighters safe as well. And then within the last couple months, we've done a few things over there to try to shore up that division, we've been working with city manager to help get a fire captain that's been assigned over to Fire Prevention. A lot of his work right now is focusing on policy revision, implementation, investigations, and inspections, obviously, he's been helping out with that too. Very quickly, he's gotten on board, he's built good collaborative working relationships with the county arson task force, so that we do have some backup for investigations. We're also reaching out to our current firefighters to see who is interested in investigation training, but also who has previous investigation training, so we're getting those personnel trained up with a refresher program coming up in the next couple of months. We're utilizing shift personnel to help catch up on inspections, and just an example of that, we had just recently provided fifty-two hours of staff inspection services, and they were able to catch up on a lot of the high-risk occupancies, like the high schools during the breaks in March that all of our schools went through, and they really helped the division catch back up again. They're also implementing a records management system, and this is going to be more of a robust system, be able to pull more active data out of that log. And so, we're wrapping that up right now, we're just cross-verifying with G I S the addresses of all the occupancies to make sure that we haven't missed anything, and then we're going to import it into our records management system. So that's been some really great work in only, really, just a couple weeks, so they've been working very hard. And then obviously, we're collaborative working with Building Safety and Development Services Division as well, so we have to be hand-in-hand on a lot of these issues. Next is our Emergency Services, again, people that are responding to the calls, emergency response, fire prevention inspections, we're still requiring our crews to do fire inspection while they're on shift as well, to help out the division. Pre-incident planning and mapping, we always want to see the building before something happens into it, so we have a good sense of what's going on in there. And then also, the training of the firefighters on a daily basis. They respond to anything that comes in, any nine-one-one call comes in. A majority of our call volume is EMS, our medical calls, it's in the high seventies for those types of call volumes. And then obviously, fire suppression, which could be structure, could be autos, could be brush, or trash fires. And then we also have the mix of vehicle accidents and entrapments, where patients trapped into the car, use the jaws of life to execute them out. And then also, people that are stuck on the trails, or mountain rescues, those types of calls. And then hazardous conditions, gasses, chemical spills, and lines down. And then obviously, we'll obviously go out for anything, so snake removals, animal problems, we are the do-all when they need help, so.
I appreciate the snake removal.
I appreciate that they do that too, and they don't assign that to me. We're part of the automatic aid system, which recently, Phoenix Fire Department had a study done on them, and this was seen as one of the best practices in emergency services. So we have been in the automatic aid system, we participate on a regular basis with all the different subcommittees for that system. Basically, it erases jurisdictional boundaries, there are no town lines, city lines, the closest available vehicle to the call will respond to that call, and then it ensures the highest level of customer care and the services for our citizens. Allows participating agencies to better use resources, and obviously improves our firefighter safety on a daily basis.
Can you just-
Yes.
... enlighten us, because I've had a couple requests later, people moved into town wondering the service of replacing people's fire alarms.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The smoke detectors, if-
I guess that's a better word, smoke detectors.
Smoke detectors, yeah. You know, obviously, a lot of those batteries need to be replaced, we ask that they be replaced, you know, either every October, or, when I came from Massachusetts, we used to say whenever you turn the clocks back to replace your batteries, because they had daylight savings times there, but unfortunately, we don't, so. We remind people around Fire Prevention Week in October to replace their smoke batteries whenever they can.
But we don't do that anymore as a service.
We don't do that right now, as a service, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make that known, because that's what they expected, and I said-
Yes.
-I thought we cut that out quite a mile ago, due to cost and the budget, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
We've also entered into an agreement, now I think we're in about our third year with Litchfield Park, so we provide fire and emergency services, and also fire prevention to that city. That pays our city about five hundred thousand a year, which helps reduce costs for Goodyear taxpayers, and also for Litchfield Park, but also provides a high level of service that they've never had before, they were not in the automatic aid system. So this I G A with us allows them the access into the automatic aid system, and obviously improve safety for their residents. Most of the calls are serviced out of Fire Station one-eight-three, which is at the community park in Goodyear, and it's about a mile away from essentially the center of Litchfield Park, so. Their call volume represents about two calls per day for that station.
Well, it's greatly appreciated, we get that response from our neighbors quite often, so.
Yeah, and we get to participate in their city council meetings on a monthly basis, and they're very appreciative of us, so. Some of the daily staffing objectives that we have for each day, we have a minimum staffing requirement of twenty-four, and so that's, this is how it's broken down, between the battalion chief who runs the shift, and then the six captains that are there to oversee each station, and the battalion chief is their supervisors. And then we have, on every piece of apparatus, we have four firefighters, two of those which have to be paramedics, so providing the highest level of care to our patients. We're also staffing down in Mobile with two personnel at this time, one captain and one firefighter, one of which has to be a paramedic. So we're involved in that community, and there's a little kind of behind-the-scenes that we're also involved down there too. We're doing a lot of station and vehicle tours, those seem to have increased recently. And then also, we're involved in the filony down there, so around Christmas time, we've been working with members of Pebble Creek, and also council member Campbell, to kind of help us raise some money and give Christmas presents to those members of folks down in Mobile, and that's always been very, very well-received, and it's just a great thing to witness, it's a great community service that they do. But I actually want to just take a quick second and talk about Ben Cabrera, he works for facilities, and he goes around and fixes a lot of the things that start to kind of break down within the city. Well, he was down at Fire Station one-eight-seven just recently, and was fixing some items down there, and asked the crews if there was anything else that you could help them with, and they told him about the water fill station that's located across the street from the fire station. And the residents have to go there to get their water in their portable tanks, well, the water just comes gushing out, and just spills all over the place, and so, they talked to them, talked to Ben about it, he looked at it, went down to the hardware store, got some parts, came back, and now has a more controlled flow that comes out of there, so. I know Ben probably doesn't get a lot of recognition for the work he does, but he definitely deserves something for that, it's great.
Especially water.
Yeah, especially water.
We talk about water, water conservation, and you always want to throw the group in there with the mouths open.
Mark's probably smiling behind you.
Yeah, no, that's a, it's a great service, and we thank him for his ingenuity and his talent to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
Good question, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I really should probably know this, but what is B R, I see engine slash B R.
Oh, that's the brush, it's a brush truck.
Well, I think it's not brush, but I didn't know what the R was.
Yeah, it's a brush, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a two-person vehicle.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to the Training Division, which is located in Professional Standards Division, we make sure that all the, for all the sworn personnel, that the training is conducted on a daily basis, and also while they're on duty as well. And so this has been a really, a very busy division of late, they've been working with the new recruits to get them tested and through the functional assessment before they were hired, and then obviously, on April fifteenth, they'll start in a smaller, downsized academy, because they are coming with experience to us, so they'll be busy getting those, those new folks prepped for getting onto the trucks and responding.
I'm assuming they came from other cities close by.
Yes, yes. Actually, we have one from out of state, Oklahoma, one from Cottonwood, we have one from down in Sierra Vista, and another one that is local, from El Mirage, so.
Okay, across the state.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent, excellent pick-ups of those employees. For the Training Division, last year, they did seventeen thousand hours of training, which equates to about two hundred hours per person. Some of the specialty ones that they do is the live burn training, and also the hoarder drill, so we set up the burn tower to look like a hoarder's house, and we actually had, yes, it was a really good drill. We had quite a few companies come, fire companies come from all over the valley to see this drill, and a lot of them wanted to participate, and we had some, at some point, we had some actors and role players playing the hoarder, and so it was, it was a lot of fun. They did a really good job with it, they got a lot of valuable training out of it as well. And then we also conduct hazmat training on Fridays as well, and we've been working collaboratively with Phoenix, and also Peoria on some of those training opportunities as well. And then the crews also participate in Monday hazmat trainings down with the City of Phoenix.
Paul, could you pause just for a moment?
Sure.
We do have Wally, they're going to put her on the phone. All right, can we put Wally on the phone?
I'm on.
All right, great, Wally, I'm sorry that we had a problem with that, and you missed part of it, we'll make sure that you get briefed on most everything that was said this evening up until this point.
Well, actually, I was following along all the way, just you couldn't hear me.
Oh, all right, good.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that, all right. So, and I understand it'll take you a few minutes when you want to answer a question, so I'll try to be patient and then give you that moment, so, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, thank you. And then just some of the annual training that the Training Division provides to our company members, the sworn members, so the annual mandated and required training, company officer battalion and leadership training, engineer driver operator training, some of the, obviously, the live fire training, and hazmat, technical rescue that we talked about, physical fitness, again, working with Franklin Pierce today, and then the wildland and urban interface fire training as well, and obviously, we're just starting into the wildland season, so, again, predicted to be kind of a busier season for us in the area. Medical Services Division, again, makes up a lot of what we respond to, and so we were able to, with working with the city manager, we were able to install a battalion chief over the Medical Services Division, so something that we hadn't had in a little while now. I was actually the last Medical Services Battalion Chief, and I was promoted to the deputy's job in two thousand eight, so we haven't had anybody in there since then, so it's been nice to have that person back in there. It allows the EMS captain to provide more continuing education on a monthly basis, also doing recertification programs, coordinating those, and then working with the area colleges, and also then lastly, providing quality assurance for all the calls that we go out on. One of the things that, you know, we didn't mention in the, in this PowerPoint, was the Southwest Ambulance contract that we recently, well, when I say recently, it's about two years now that we've had that, but we've been tracking the dollars and the revenues from that contract that's been afforded to us, and right now, we're on track to increase what we've done last year for collections and revenue. So that's been, it's been a great contract for us, great partnership with Rural Metro, Southwest Ambulance, and we really look forward to kind of continuing on that contractual relationship. We obviously develop a lot of regional relationships, we help with procurement of disposable medical equipment, we provide the health and safety for the firefighters within this division, we help develop medical protocols for the region, Mario Santos, our EMS captain, assisted on a lot of those committees that helped develop those protocols, and also cutting-edge tools that was obviously provided by this council. You know, it was about five years ago that I came to the council and asked for an upgrade in our monitored defibrillators, and when we put that in, it's just incredible the amount of lives that we've affected and positive, positively affected, and without that, you know, it's sad to think the lives that would be affected negatively, so we really appreciate all the support the council's given to the department. Support Services Division, kind of the hidden division, they don't get a lot of the accolades that the firefighters do, but they keep everything that the firefighters are using in working order. They ensure that we're within the OSHA guidelines for all of our equipment, and that we have a suitable and safe environment to work in while we're on duty. They provide the air management, so that the tanks of air that we wear on our backs into hazardous situations. We do have a certified M S A technician, so he is authorized to repair a lot of that on-site, which saves the city a considerable amount of money. Actually maintains over a hundred S C B As, that's the self-contained breathing apparatus that we need to wear, but we also do that in collaboration with the Goodyear Police Department with their special assignment unit, who, their members are also authorized and trained to wear those S C B As. They conduct the annual fit testing for the City of Goodyear users, and also maintains a lot of the functional equipment that helps maintain our breathing air bottles, and also the compressor that they have to fill those bottles. And then also, we work on the communications equipment, our communications with the City of Phoenix, with the police department, and the other valley agencies, they make sure that those are maintained at the highest level. The ground support is all the vehicles that we ride in. Currently, we have over five million dollars in assets that we respond on, obviously on a daily basis, but on a yearly basis as well. They manage all the annual pump testing, and they work very closely with Fleet in making sure that all those certifications are on time and done in a timely manner. Maintain service and tools and equipment valued at over a million dollars, and manages all the annual fire testing for the hoses, the ground ladders, and the extending of the shoes. And then also, they oversee the gear that we wear into the hazardous environments, so our P P E, personal protective equipment, they make sure that that is up to the national standards, and then making sure that all of our stations are stocked with the equipment that we do need.
Good question. Joanne?
Paul, a few years ago, I was in a couple-day emergency type of homeland security training, and I recall that one of the things that they were discussing was the hazardous trucks, okay?
Yeah, hazardous materials, yeah.
Yes, and the supply and maintaining of those materials-
Yeah.
-could be very cumbersome-
Yes.
-and very expensive. I was just wondering, has that been an issue for our department at all?
Not right now, we're still able to get the U A C, the Urban Area Security Initiative grant monies, so that comes in through sustainment monies for us, so we have been very fortunate to still maintain that. Tim Newville sits at that table, along with Chief Bill Bishop, and because we're at that table, we are able to get those sustainment monies on a continuous basis, so we've been very lucky.
Thank you.
Okay, so talking about the facilities, working with facilities and Kevin Dobbs, and making sure that all of our stations are maintained for our members that are working in there, but also the community members that come in to visit, make sure that everything's in proper working order. Those are valued at close to thirteen million in assets for our department and for our city. As we talked about homeland security, preparedness, response, mitigation, recovery, but they also have the education program, they're very connected to the community in the volunteer program, which we could not do without. The training is part of the emergency management with the E O C training, and also the N I M S training that each employee gets when they come through G I O, citywide disaster exercises, we've also been working with the HAM radio operators as well during those exercises, because as we know, during nine eleven, that was one of the things that went down, was the radio system, so having a HAM operators available, and then also working with the CERT teams as well, and their training that comes along with that. And then- and their training that comes along with that. And then Tim has also been busy with the emergency planning, the emergency operations plan, the continuity of operation in government. We saw that in any type of disaster, you always want to make sure that people have a place to look to their government to make sure that they're still operating. And then the county-wide protection plan as well. And then the terrorism liaison officers, this is, one of our fire department members works closely with the police on any type of hazardous environment to ensure that they have the correct level of response for the fire department. So it's seamless. Whatever the police are in a hostile environment, we want to make sure that they are protected and that they have the appropriate medical response there for them. Community education piece is a big piece of the emergency management. They are in the community, they have a great, a lot of great connections with the community. Tanya Tanner does a great job for the fire power programs. We do provide these also down to the mobile schools as well. We have car seat technicians for new parents that come in and to make sure that there's baby seats are installed correctly. We found out about eighty-five percent of car seats nationwide are installed incorrectly. So it's really important that we have our car seats tech trained to ensure that we're keeping our littlest community members safe. And then also our CPR instructors, ensuring that we have CPR programs. Just recently, Tanya was overtraining the Reds and the Indians, their training staff during spring training. That's something that she goes over every year and does for them. So they really appreciate us coming over and helping them out before their season gets really crazy. And then obviously, the public access defibrillator program that's around the city. The Fire Corps, I just wanted to spend just a couple minutes talking about the amount of hours that they've provided for us over the last three years, close to three, I'm sorry, four thousand hours that they've provided. And it seems to keep growing each year. And if you looked at that from a dollar value, you know, it's, it's just incredible. It's close to ninety thousand dollars that these volunteers have helped us with. So just a great amount of support that they have had for our, for our department. And then from the supplements from last year, we talked about the battalion chief. So Russ Braden took over as the EMS battalion chief in January. Again, has been able to allow the EMS captain to take a lot more of the training and QA onboard, and Russ has been able to take a lot of the administrative stuff off of him. Implementation of telestaff, we are looking at completion of July first, it'll probably be a little bit sooner than that. So we're at about sixty-six percent at that point now. But that was about seven thousand dollars that the council afforded us through the supplements for that. We've also done some professional development, so we've completed some accreditation training, the first steps in that. We've done some supervisor legal liability training that was completed in February and then also some technical training for our desktop solutions. So sending staff to understand the data that we're running, helping them get the right tools and the right training to help run that data and get a better understanding of what that data is. And then obviously, we talked, I talked about the EKG, monitored defibrillators that you allowed us five years ago. Well, obviously, with that program comes maintenance of those, of those pieces of equipment. So this year was the first year that we paid for the maintenance of that because the initial purchase, we were able to negotiate in the maintenance program for that. So the council was very nice and generous in allowing us to get the thirty-five thousand for that, so that will carry us out for another few years for that piece. And then lastly, to talk about kind of opportunities and challenges, obviously with the city management assessment, we begin to work on that with city management. And then also, as I talked earlier, workforce and succession planning, hand in hand, but making sure that we have the staff to meet the future demands of the fire department and also for our citizens. Professional development training, technology, it's always something that we seem to be chasing. You know, at some point, we would love to get electronic patient care reporting for our firefighter paramedics and EMTs in the field. And could we couple that with some other technology out there to kind of save some dollars so we're not duplicating services? And then obviously, the infrastructure maintenance of our stations and our, our fire apparatus. Those are some of the challenges that we're working on for the future. So I'm open for any questions?
All right, questions? Bill?
All right, there we go. This is probably more for Mr. Dalkey than it is, but also for Paul because you weren't here during the presentation last year. When we had these individually last year, I asked the question about the ladder truck that we have.
Yes.
And it is not, it's not on anyone's radar for replacement, although it is running an awful lot and probably should be. So this was a heads-up kind of a thing. We had the discussion during whoever I was with, I think it might have been Councilmember Pizzillo and Campbell, that we have a vehicle that is eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars that it will need to be replaced in probably sooner rather than later timeframe, and it's not on our vehicle equipment radar. So I, I don't know, obviously, this isn't the time to talk about that, perhaps in the future. And it's certainly not anything that needs to hit, hit it now, but we need to make sure we're looking at that.
I remember you, I remember that being brought up.
I've been working with Chief Chappell on making sure that we get that in, into the process. So that, that is something that we're, we're talking about with Fleet. Thank you.
Joe?
Overtime. Just a quick question. Are we going to be able to, and I think you're working on it, more detailed breakout of the sources of where all the overtime is coming from and a tracking ability to, to see how we can maybe manage that?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna be working with city manager's group on that. We are working at refining the report that we give to the city manager's office to make sure it is the correct information that you want to see. So I think the meeting's scheduled for the ninth right now, so that's next Tuesday. So we're gonna start working with city manager group and looking at that. And then obviously, city manager will come back to you with solutions and ideas.
Thank you. And Councilmember Pizzillo, the other is, is this was a commitment on the part of manager's office, even in the next fiscal year. We think it's going to be a several-month process to really start to determine where overtime is, you know. So the HR director, now Deputy City Manager, still hard to get used to that one, but she, that, that's one of her objectives is to work over the next several months. So I don't want you to have an unrealistic expectation. It'll be discussed in a lot of detail as part of this budget process. We'll do what we can, but it is certainly going to take more concerted effort.
It's a little more complicated than just, we talk about overtime on a regular, a regular job, that's real easy, right? It's real easy, okay? You work nine hours and you know what it is. The way that overlapping and intricacies of fire, it, it really is, it is more difficult to make adjustments.
Joe?
No, I understand that.
Many categories of overtime.
No, I understand, as long as we're moving towards it, because I'd really like to get a flavor, not being, you know, from fire, but I like to, like to get the flavor of where is driving all those different categories and how we can address it. And I know it's gonna take longer than this budget process to get there, but I think it's real important that we do get there at some point.
Well, I think it's always good to be able to answer that question because I think the public, that's, that's always a question, the public doesn't quite understand the overtime, and we need to be very transparent about that. And so they, and they understand the process. And so I think this'll define it and I think probably adjust it a little bit. Sherry?
Very good presentation.
Thanks.
Two things you have on your opportunities and challenges are both technology and the maintenance. And I don't know if that's for you or for Brian or both of you, are we gonna see some specifics? Because you said some of this, cutting edge technology is now several years old. So do we have a plan or is there a plan out there or going to be a plan on how to keep the technology cutting the edge and what maintenance needs to be done so that things don't deteriorate?
Well, part of the, yeah, I'll take the first part. The, part of the supplement that we got last year will allow us to continue the maintenance on that, that tool. And we've been working with the, the vendor itself on some ideas. Because obviously, as you start to move out in that timeframe, in the age of that equipment, you want the newest technology. And they have some solutions that doesn't cost the full amount, that essentially gives you all the guts that are brand-new, but the box is the original. So there's some really innovative solutions that they have out there, and so we'll be working with them over the next year. And we're not there yet, but obviously, that maintenance program keeps them, their life a lot longer. So we're very fortunate that you guys were able to supply that for us.
And I guess you must share ideas with the other fire departments within the...
Yeah, we do. We actually, I chair a, a regional committee with twenty-six fire department members, and we talk a lot about collaboration and some of the ideas and how we can get together and share and get the best cost that we can for all the cities. So it's something we're definitely working on.
Good. I'd like to hear that. Any other?
And I would just add, thank you, Paul. I would also add on the technology, we do have an ITS, Information Technology System Department presentation tonight, service, excuse me, not system. But you'll see what we're trying to do corporate-wide or city-wide in terms of some of the upcoming technologies. So while each department has their own bite of technology, you'll be exposed to some of the more global technology tonight.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you, Paul, that was well done.
Good, thanks.
All right, so next one will be Development Services, and that'll be Sherry Waifel-Sines, Development Service Director. Oh, shoot, I had the worst trouble with this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be here with you this evening. I wanted to share with you a little bit of planner humor. So if you will, we brought our Budget Sarfurwimps coffee cup this evening, just to set the tone, and wanted with that to talk a little about, bit about where we've come this year from a Development Services perspective. As you all are aware, with your direction and that of the city management, the Development Services Department was created in June of 2012 and has been operational for about ten months now. The creation of the department was through bringing three different divisions under the leadership, Economic Development Division from the city manager's office, the Building Safety and a bit of the Fire Operations from FIRE, and then the original Community Development Department as well. And that's a, a team of thirty today. So, under the leadership of Economic Development, Harry Paxton, under Building Safety, Ed Kulik, and our Planning Manager, Joe Schmitz.
Do we have a slide on that?
I do. Thank you.
Joanne?
I have to ask this, I know you're just beginning, but, you know, a few years ago, when the city had layoffs, the Planning and Zoning Division, you know, was, was gutted tremendously. And, and, you know, it was understandable. I mean, we didn't have the demand either at that time. With the growth that you've seen in this last year, are we still being able to maintain at the current staffing levels? Back to my kind of question of Monday of seeing those, within the engineering department, seeing some of those, those qualities in the same staffing, are you, are we still okay, I should say, in the staffing for this area with the growth that you've seen this year?
Vice Mayor, thank you for your question. So we did pull some stats to take a look where we've been historically and where we're headed, and, you know, a little bit out of line with the discussion, but, but very relevant to what's going on in the market today. So today, you know, March of 2013, our single-family permit numbers are on track with about July of 2007. So we're seeing significant increase in March alone. We saw a thirteen permit increase, which is the most substantial increase in over three years, month over month. So...
And in '07, we were fully staffed.
Correct. So the Planning and Zoning staff is down about three positions from that timeframe. However, we've made significant improvements to the planning process and the building plan review and permit process that we'll talk a little bit about today. But we are keeping an eye on that and we're very sensitive to the fact that our primary driver in creating this department was to improve the service to our development community.
Very good, thank you.
Let's talk a little bit about what we did when we created the department and what our direction was from a, a numbers perspective. One of the most important recruitment efforts that was identified through public process and through the council visioning process was that of a higher education user in the community, someone who can deliver not only the level that Franklin Pierce is bringing, but also what other users can we find to provide higher ed to our residents. And I'm happy to say that we're very close to discussing with council and the community about what that effort has yielded for us. But in, in terms of what we can talk about today, that revenue has been used for marketing purposes, different presentations and outreach efforts that we've used, and trade shows to kind of work with our partners to call down the list of opportunities for higher education in the community. And as I said, we'll be happy to talk about the success that we've reached there in, in just a few weeks.
Coming attractions.
Yes.
Be happy to talk to you.
Stay tuned.
And on the Development Services General Plan update, all of you have been actively engaged in that process and we're grateful for that. That number is a product of what we're paying our consultant to help with the community facilitation. As you all are aware, there are about thirty-two public engagement opportunities that are occurring during the general plan process. And so we think it's been a very effective means to have one consultant that helps, you know, de-government speak our planning and zoning message to the community. And we've also been very fortunate to use some of those dollars to revamp the website so that it's more user-friendly for garnering community input and also creating the Mindbender application, which has used kind of the blogosphere piece that our residents can openly have dialogue about the issues they're interested in using. And additionally, also for the open houses and for two interns that we're using for that process to help us gather and kind of call down the input that we're gathering and put it in sensible form so we can quickly get it out to the general plan committee members and to council. So I think you've seen this in other formats already. Getting to the council's strategic initiatives, we really do see Development Services as the driver behind many of these initiatives, and so we wanted to put it there at the heart. It's important to note that the Development Services Department is one percent of the general fund, and that's about 2.95 million dollars on an ongoing operating basis. So getting then into the divisions, Economic Development, its primary mission is really the attraction and enhancement of our employment base and our tax revenues. And that's through the attraction of, of new jobs and the growth of our existing employment Economic Development represents 751,640 of operating dollars and under the leadership of Harry Paxton. And we've added Christian Green and Tina Daniels to that work group over the recent years. And Christian is primarily focused on business development and Tina on the small business development piece as well. Some of the goals of the Economic Development Team, the attraction of quality employment in our community, the attraction of aerospace manufacturing, distribution, internet fulfillment, retail, hospitality and resort amenities. Those are some of the primary target industries as identified by the council and the community. And also a focus on retention and expansion of our existing businesses. Some of the very specific objectives of that group is to create capital investment in our community and creation of high-wage jobs. Additionally, they are working on increasing the absorption of our existing assets in the community, so office, industrial, retail absorption. And we're happy to note that those vacancy rates have come down substantially in Goodyear over the last eighteen months to where we're about four percent vacancy in office today and heading south of any double digits in the other two categories. So significant improvements in our market.
Let's say compared to metropolitan area like Phoenix, where...
Right, so Phoenix is still in the double digits on the office and on the industrial. They're doing a little better in their retail categories, interestingly. Some of the East Valley cities are also below the double digits, so in the single digits in terms of all three categories. So we have some work to do. The good and the bad of that story is that we're also running short on inventory. So, you know, the buzzword in, in the development industry is shovel-ready these days, that we have a site that can be turned and built on. And that ties back to the initiatives of the Development Services Department in facilitating development processes that, that result in shovel-ready sites. But our existing inventory of spaces is really dwindling significantly.
Thank you.
So moving on to the Planning and Zoning Division, 587,336, while seven staff members, so you can see kind of the economies of scale... So you can see kind of the economies of scale in the Planning Department. They are a little lean these days, but we hope to be able to supplement some of their costs and training opportunities in the coming year so that we can keep everybody certified and keep everybody up to the latest and best practices. Under the leadership of Joe Schmitz, that work group is responsible, as we've talked about, for the general plan and for the administration of the city's zoning and planning development policies. Most of our development agreements and design standards are administered through this work group, and also they are responsible for the Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustment Commissions.
Joe?
Excuse me. Do you have the flexibility in case something would parachute in of a large, significant project to be able to contract out to get planning process through quickly and responsibly?
Councilman Pizzillo, thank you for your question. In fact, we do, and it's been, I guess, the good graces of the development community that we've had some one-time monies in this year's budget to be able to outsource some plan reviews when we've been lean on staff, and we needed to expedite processes that either were agreed to in development agreements or the process itself demanded the expedited services.
Thank you.
So the goals of the Planning and Zoning Work Group, excellent customer service, timely and accurate responses to our development community, administering of the C D B G and home programs, our low and moderate housing program, and maintaining accurate and current demographic and growth projection information. This growth projection and demographic information is part and parcel to the continued growth of the community, in that we work directly with Engineering, the Water Department, all of our different partners here in the community to identify those water needs, infrastructure needs, potential growth for school planning, all the different components that make the development process work in conjunction so that we're prepared for growth when it arrives. Specifically, the objectives of that work group are timely review of development applications. Today, we are doing 20-day first turnaround and 10-day second turnaround on new development, which is fairly good, but we'd like to talk about improving that. And so we've got some other bullet points to discuss later in this presentation. And also, the dissemination of the population and demographic information that we discussed earlier, that gets shared with the city council, but also with our fellow departments to help for planning purposes. Moving on to the Building Safety Division, that's $1,060,000-ish. And Building Safety has probably shared the majority of the change that's occurred within Development Services since its creation, and that's under the leadership of Ed Kulik. I'd like to talk a little bit about what's going on with Building Safety, as it reflects also in the other development processes. So we're working on streamlining the plan review process, and the Building Safety Group, along with representative from Engineering and Planning, take in the majority of plans in our Development Services one-stop-shop. And they are looking at things that we can do to streamline that process. Most importantly, over-the-counter permits, permits in the field, and self-certifications. And you may have learned about those various things that through League of Cities and other places that you've been. That is the trend in development today. And all three of those programs are geared toward a more expedient issuance of permit while maintaining standards and safety. So those allow us also on the back end to reduce staff time reviewing plans, while it puts a bit of the burden on the development community to produce better plans initially. And so I think that's a fair trade in the development process. And we will keep monitoring that situation and hope to move towards more of these type of programs to eliminate just...
What's the timeframe you're looking at?
So we're already doing some over-the-counter permits for some pool permits and things of that nature, some patio covers. So that's good, but we'd like to be able to do those more consistently. The permit in the field is also being done on a very limited basis, but we're looking at going to full permit in the field on some types of reviews by July of this year. And also, the self-certification as well. And that would be more of the photovoltaics that could be a self-certification potentially. So there's some pros and cons to that, and we'd like to come back to council just to discuss the issue more fully.
Joe?
I really appreciate, because I think this is our lifeblood, is bringing in business, growing our base. I guess my question is, is from a survey standpoint, how do you go about soliciting feedback from your customers, which to me is very, very important, in a way in which you get, I guess the best word, in other words, as I say, is honest response so you understand whether what you're trying to accomplish is getting accomplished?
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, thank you for your question. That's an excellent point. So that is actually one of the directed strategic initiatives of the department this year. And we are just currently revamping the questionnaire that is online to make sure it's more specific to each division within the department, so we can be tracking which particular group someone may have had an issue with or what they wish to praise us with potentially. And more importantly, we're holding quarterly development review meetings with the development community. Those were implemented just about 18 months ago, so that is a new process. It's been very effective in getting the dialogue going with the development community and openly discussing with the Home Builders Association, for example, discussing the changes with 1598, discussing the changes that are going on with our front desk staff and our processing standards and our processing timelines, just to be very clear and open about our processes. It's allowing a much more open dialogue. In addition, part of my role has been to be out in the development community, meeting with our partners and with the Berkeridge community, and understanding the concerns that are there. We've been meeting with the schools, for example, because we've had issues there in communication in terms of who is responsible for what in the process and what the timelines might look like. So many different tools, but we're also using the general plan, open houses and meetings as a process to get feedback. Lots of small business owners have been engaged in that process, and we're hearing some of the concerns from there as well.
I appreciate that, because, you know, I like where we're going with this. I just want to make sure we're getting there. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Now, in the past, how are we handling this? In the past, we had some contentious situations between contractors and the occupant, or whoever, how I can term that.
Yes.
And we found inconsistencies on what the city says and what the contractor says. And so I know that some time ago, we did confront that problem. I'm not sure we solved it. So how are we handling that so that...
It's not a he said, she said?
Not he said, she said, because it did become quite, I mean, on dates, on certain items in the construction field and so forth.
Mayor, thank you for that question. It's a good opportunity to highlight some of the things that we have improved in the process. One of the things that we've done is added the owner to the application. So the owner gets notified in every step of the process when a permit is issued and when a permit is available. Now, there is still the potential for miscommunication in that the applicant and the owner may not be receiving the email or the mail when something may go awry or reading it. So for example, if the applicant is the director of real estate for a corporation, and he may be listed as the applicant, but the CEO may be hearing information outside of that process, that is where we still can have miscommunication in the process. But to large extent, we have cleared up the majority of that issue. And we have also, as I've indicated, engaged the development community more openly, where they, in previous instances, may have felt the potential for retaliation, either from the consultants or the owner's side. We've opened those lines of communication such that they feel comfortable, they can come directly into our process, ask tough questions, and get answers there at the desk, sit down with one of our team members. And to that end, one thing that we've done is added the individual team members of the Development Services staff direct line to our internet so that they can get direct answers from staff.
And I guess that goes in the same line, not just the contract, but the architect?
Correct.
Again, that was one of those areas.
That's correct. Yeah, in the case of most plans, it is the architectural firm that is also listed as well. And then if it's a fire alarm permit, the fire alarm permit company as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So another element to the Building Safety Division changes is actually for all of Development Services, which is going to a full electronic plan review process. Council has directed that, and we're very excited about the resources that we've been sharing with the engineering team on this to get to full electronic plan review by July of this year. And so that's a multi-step process, but it is intended to reduce time, reduce cost, provide more clarity and consistency to the customer in our review and comment process. And so that's a very exciting step. There are some boxes on this slide that I'd like to talk about. On the left side, our second box down, the Fire Plan Review, was brought in-house to Building Safety. And the fourth box down, the Fire Marshall Operations, were brought in-house to Development Services as well. And that has allowed us to provide more continuity and clarity to the customer and the development community in the plan review of fire plans with the entire plan review process, one streamlined timeline as well as review. And I think that's working very well for the development community as well. We've heard good feedback there. And then the last box would be the box on the right-hand side, which is our Code Compliance Team, which has come over from police in this fiscal year as well. Gail Bossguider, John Robinson, Pam Roush, and that team. And that team is really responsible for the code enforcement throughout the community, maintaining the cleanliness and the standards of our codes and ordinances. And they're doing excellent job under the leadership of Ed Kulik. And the most important piece of that is that we actually increased the feet on the street, if you will, by adding one of the team members to a full code compliance role. So now we have, if you will, 30%, 33% more eyes and feet on the street looking at our code issues. And we've instituted a much closer relationship with our neighborhoods team as well to identify and be proactive with our code compliance.
Bill?
Good news on that front. At the latest historic Goodyear Neighborhood Alliance, there was zero code compliance issues. So apparently it's working, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Joanne?
I was just trying to recall if it was originally code was in this. I know, I know we didn't have Development Services, but way back maybe four years ago, and then it got moved to police, and everybody said, oh, it's perfect there, and now it's been... Correct me if I'm wrong. Is that... I'm just trying to think why we're going back and forth. But whatever works best, obviously, we want. But can you give me the storks here?
Yes, Councilmember Osborne, just a little history. We had, used to have a Community Services Department, and that included several functions, including I G, intergovernmental relations, neighborhoods, code compliance, community advocate, et cetera. When that department was dissolved many years ago, then we started to move those different divisions within that department. So we ended up putting that with the Police Department. I want to say it was about three years ago. That was actually before Jerry's time. Pardon me? Probably four years, probably four years ago. And then when we took a serious look at it, when we created this department, Development Services, and working closely with the Police Chief, it was decided it would best be here. So we think it's working, and, you know, we are hearing better results.
And actually, it gives a better look. I mean, you can look in code in this side of the house. It makes the city look better because I think there are cooperation here in how you have to have the city. Economic Development has to keep the city looking at a certain plateau in order to encourage businesses and more home communities, and it's really important. And so I've seen a big difference in some of our streetscape, some of the signage, although we did find one today. We'll have to let you know about. It's been there a long, long time from a county election. But for the most part, I think that I've seen, and I don't know about the rest of you, I've seen a big improvement. Have you all?
And that wasn't the issue. It was just, I recalled why it was so good when it was moved over to the Police Department. That's why I was just asking what, you know, the difference is. So that's fine. It works, it works.
Thank you. I would like to point out something else. I don't have the data right in front of me, but we do have, we're part of the Valley Benchmarking Group, and one of the things that's looked at is code compliance. We'll be going through that in another presentation to council. But I do want to point out that our voluntary code, voluntary responses to code issues is extremely high. So we'll bring that information before you. So that's good.
So we actually see a difference?
That means our citizens are very...
We see a difference from, you know, before, as Joanne says, when it's under the different department, and this one, will we see a clarity in that?
Yes. Mayor, I believe that information was through the end of last fiscal year, but we'll get that information to you. But the good news is our residents, our businesses are responding voluntarily, and amongst the highest in the metro Phoenix area. So there's a lot of pride in the community.
Well, somebody made me move my horse trailer that was parked in the driveway for one day. So that was a son got in trouble, trust me. Our code was on me. That was a good thing.
Mayor, council, thank you for that comment.
Hey, I fess up. It's okay.
So the program description, we've covered most of this already, but the Building Safety Group, you know, really focuses on two really important aspects of what we do here in Development Services, and that's quality construction and safety. They are responsible for enforcing the city's building code, mechanical, electrical and plumbing codes, and also elements of the zoning ordinance, as well as compliance with the city codes related to community standards on enforcement of the code compliance aspects, code enforcement. So...
We have proof of the enforcement tonight.
That's right.
We do. Some of the specific goals of the Building Safety Work Group are outstanding customer service through tenant improvement projects. The majority of projects, subsequently permits that come across our desk, I thought it might be kind of fun to know, the majority of the permits by far are actually tenant improvement permits that come across. Those are small commercial improvements that occur in the community by number of permits. The actual dollar value of permits is a factor of four on the residential family housing construction side, but the total number of permits is much higher on the tenant improvement commercial side.
Bill?
Sherri, have we proved the turnaround time on tenant improvements? I know that was an issue a couple of years ago as well.
Excellent question. Thank you, Councilmember Stip. So today, we are at 10 days on initial review and five days on subsequent reviews, so half that of new construction on tenant improvements. It's a much improved process, but we're also looking at streamlining that as well in the future.
Great.
Other aspects of the Building Safety Division, Fire Prevention Services, and that's the Fire Plan Review, and also some of the inspections. We also are responsible for all of the permitting activity that occurs on the safety side and the code compliant, code compliance side, as we've discussed. The specific objectives of the Building Safety Work Group are the stated cycle times or less on tenant improvements, as just discussed, to efficiently address the concerns of our customers on the fire prevention side, the processing of solar plans. The photovoltaic permits are actually a very large portion of our permits that come across the table in terms of the number of permits. And quite often, that's a homeowner. So it's one of the few instances where a homeowner may have some direct interaction with the Development Services Department, and so we're trying to give that very special attention and make sure that we're very thorough and clear in terms of what that looks like. And as we get more comfortable with that process, again, we hope to go, be able to go to more of a self-certification process where our development partners are absolutely clear on what our expectations are and what our codes require.
Are we still tracking percentage of solar panels on residential homes here or businesses in Goodyear?
I don't have those numbers today, but I'd be happy to bring those back to council.
Yeah, I think we still, I mean, we've had the publicity of our solar company closing, but I think we have a lot of vendors here that are still doing, and small businesses that are doing, are involved in it. I think we should still keep that number out there.
You know what's funny about that, Georgia? Just last night at the Sudea HOA meeting that I attended, there was a citizen that was, Harry was giving a great presentation of all the companies and stuff, and the citizen asked, well, you know, we're supposed to be the solar city. Where's all of our solar companies? She was, you know, unfortunately, there was our Sun Tech, but she expected us to have a bunch of solar companies. And Harry explained about, it was, you know, all the residential homes that, so, you know, there is a reason to keep that number, because there was a citizen right last night to ask that.
Yeah, absolutely. We do have a lot of ancillary businesses here in the solar business. It's still viable and working. So just so we keep that number out there.
We will. Vice Mayor, Mayor, thank you for your comments. And I think part of what is actually accelerating the number of single-family homes with the photovoltaics is the market. You know, it's a little bit challenging on the commercial production side, but it's resulting in a better cost point for single-family residential to go to the photovoltaic solution. And so we anticipate that will actually accelerate. And of course, the voluntary compliance issue with the Code Compliance Division. And as City Manager Brian Dolke indicated, we are about a 96% voluntary compliance here in Goodyear. So the opportunities and challenges for the year ahead... So the opportunities and challenges for the year ahead, streamlining the development services plan review process and ensuring that our turnaround times are not only competitive, but hopefully leading in the valley, and going to the full implementation of our project docs, electronic plan review software. The timeline for that as vindicated is July of this year. The components to that are upgrading of our systems, which IT has been extremely helpful in doing and has completed much of the front-end work for that. Secondly, the training component, not only for ITS department, but also for our team in development services. And thirdly, the notification to our development community about what that process will look like and how they engage in that process. They actually are already a piece of that, so it's not necessarily in that timeline, as engineering has the, the project docs, electronic plan review already, and so many of our partners in the development community use that system to date. Additionally, the creation of our development, economic development strategic plan through the Focus on Success Program. We've talked to council about that briefly in a previous session. APS is our partner in this, and we will kick that off in May of this year and will allow us within a six-month period then to have a very robust strategic marketing and execution plan for economic development into the future. And we're very excited about that, as we have many of our community partners on the technical advisory committee throughout that process, so allow, allow us to garner a good deal of input from not only those businesses in Goodyear, but throughout the valley and from large corporations that may have perspectives outside of Arizona. Additionally, the completion of the general plan, public engagement and adoption process. So a little update on what's going on with the general plan. So the open houses were completed in January of 2013, this year, the initial phases. From now to October, we'll be working on the first draft, and you should see the first draft in October, and we'll have a three-month comment period between October and December of this year. And then in April of 2014, the Planning and Zoning Commission will get their review of what we think is pretty close to a final document. And then of June of 2014, the council will review then any comments and changes that have been made in the document. And then in November of 2014, the general plan document will go to the community for ratification in an election process.
Joanne?
I know I've, I've mentioned this before, and I'm, I'm gonna say it again. Something that when I was on planning and zoning, when we did the last general plan, I recall that we had a planning and zoning and city council meeting together.
We did.
And, and I really felt that that was a productive meeting, and I, and I thought that, you know, it also, for the, for planning and zoning, the commissioners that are on there, you know, it was, it was a good working group together, and I would sure like to see us do that again. And I know you just mentioned the dates, that P&amp;Z will see it, and then we'll see it, you know, and I'm just thinking, maybe we could be doing that together and save some time. So I'd like to suggest it again.
Vice Mayor, excellent comment. We will work to make that happen. In fact, we are just instilling our new P&amp;Z commission members and training them this coming week, and so it will be an opportunity to have the new council members and P&amp;Z commission members interact, so I think that's an excellent suggestion, and we'll make that happen.
Thank you.
And then, of course, our, our last bullet here is our outreach, of course, to the, to the development community in terms of our prospect activities. And we want to make sure that we can increase our marketing and outreach as a result of the economic development strategic plan. And so that is something that we are focused on as a result of the Focus on Success strategic planning effort. And with that, I'll take questions from council.
Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give, well, giving us an overview what this year looks like in economic development. Give the public some idea.
Sure.
Of, I know a lot of you can't, a teaser, yes, because a lot of you can't be specific on, but.
Ooh, she gave one.
Yeah, she did give one. Right, right. So just kind of, you know, because we're coming out of a very low E B, although in economic development, I thought we did exceedingly well during the downturn.
We did, Mayor, thank you for that.
So if you could just enlighten us, please.
So during the last two years of the recession here, I guess they're saying we're out of it already, but I think most of us would say we aren't feeling it quite yet, we were able to create about twenty-two hundred new jobs in the community through the location of several big corporate users, Fortune 150 users, that are along our PV 303 corridor and down in our Bullard Employment Corridor. So we're very excited about that. We also have several other new, new users that we're looking at in the market, some I can name and those which are yet to be named. Most specifically, Cookson Door is doing a project on Litchfield Park, just across from, on, just across from Lockheed Martin. It's a very large project, it's about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet and two-hundred-and-fifty jobs in, in the first phase, and they have actually room for additional expansion. Cookson Door is one of the country's oldest and largest door manufacturers of roll-up doors, so you see them in the malls, those kind of chain fences that are put up in the morning. You also see them, for example, on the Cardinal Stadium. So two pieces to that, which is not only the capital investment of about thirty-five million dollars in the building, but also an opportunity for some really decent manufacturing jobs here in the community, and also redevelopment of an area in the community that needed some attention, I think. So that's a very exciting project. Along the Palm Valley 303 corridor, we have several large users that are evaluating the community, and we are shortlisted for those projects. They are, they are large manufacturing and fulfillment type projects, and they are in the, you know, one-point-three, one-point-five million square feet range. So we're very excited about the prospects for some of those to land. And I think most importantly, those are also in that Fortune 100, Fortune 150 list. So we're really having some success with Corporate America and identifying Goodyear as a unique place. Additionally, we are seeing some growth of, for example, Macy's Corporation here in Goodyear, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand square foot expansion of their project. In our community, it will create about ninety full-time jobs, a hundred-and-twenty-five part-time, and two-hundred-and-fifty additional seasonal positions in the community, and again, about a thirty-two million dollar investment in that project as well. So lots of significant interest in the community. I think for the future, we'd like to use some of the resources in economic development and development services to more actively engage the development community in opportunities that aren't here in the community, things such as destination entertainment, higher ed uses, office products, the potential to have the Mace Rich Mall come online this fall, in terms of getting plans and drawings in the shop and starting that thirty-month clock to get the doors open. So all kinds of exciting things in our future.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. Any other questions? Great presentation. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to ITS and Dan Cotterman. I'm sorry, did I? Oh, I'm, excuse me, Dan, please sit down, and they would like a five-minute break, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. Start the meeting again. Dan, thank you for being so patient. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'll be presenting to you the fiscal year thirteen base budget overview for the ITS department, and I would encourage you to ask any questions as I go along. The ITS department comprises three divisions, the administration division, which accounts for one-point-two million, the application development and support division, which accounts for six-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, and technical support and services, which accounts for approximately eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, for a total department budget of two-point-eight million, with fourteen full-time equivalent positions.
Dan, before you move on, can I have the numbers of the employees in each one of those areas, please?
Certainly. We have an administration three, an application development and support six, and technical support and services five. Looking at each division, starting with administration, administration division contributes to the fiscal and resource management area focus by providing project management oversight, ensuring that IT investments are appropriate and aligned with the city's direction and existing investments. This is accomplished by running projects through our technical steering committee and working closely with procurement on any purchases. This division is also responsible for ensuring that our computer, computers and systems are safe and secure, and working with other divisions as needed to make sure that any new systems that are brought online are adequately protected. The administration division is responsible for ensuring that the department's activities are consistent with the city's strategic plans and management objectives, as well as implementing consistency in our processes that are based on best practices and industry standards, or what is called IT governance. And this division manages the software and hardware maintenance contracts for the city and is responsible for the IT asset management system. Within the technical support and services division, we have three main areas of service. The first is the help desk, which is focused on providing efficient, friendly service. Their purpose is to resolve issues quickly and to get users back to their jobs and being productive as quickly as we can. The second service area is the infrastructure. These folks are generally working behind the scenes on just about every IT project, but one of the more visible systems that they work on is the email system. And then third service area is telecommunications, which is focused on making sure that our phone system is always up and functioning as expected. And this is the team that recently led the phone upgrade project. I want to point out that this division is primarily contributing to the fiscal and resource management area by being good stewards of the city's IT investments. Lastly, we have the applications, development and support division, which is responsible for cradle-to-grave management of any city-owned software applications. In some cases, we've custom-developed our own applications, and in other cases, we've purchased software packages from vendors. This division also manages our database systems and does any report writing. The applications division is responsible for business analysis and working with each of the departments to help determine their needs when we're looking at a new system, and making sure that users know how to use those systems when they come online. This division also contributes to fiscal and resource management focus area by helping automate and improve other departments' processes and procedures. Looking at our strategic focus, first and foremost, we are aligned with the city's strategic action plan that was presented to you a few weeks back, but we also have a few additional items that, as IT, we're, we're looking at. The biggest project or focus that we have this year will be the HTE replacement or ERP system implementation. We understand the importance and sense of urgency that this project has and have made this our top priority. We are currently working to develop our plan and how we, and then we will be bringing that plan back to council to review that with you. Don't have a lot of detail to share with you at this moment, but we have formed an executive steering committee and are beginning at looking at options for moving forward that will ensure the successful implementation of that system. Another focus, since I'm new to the organization, is performing an assessment of the department to make sure that we don't have any areas of risk that need to be addressed, and also making sure that as a department, we're ready to support where we want to head as a city. We also heard loud and clear that there's a lot of concerns by council for the website. You might want to see some improvements there.
Oh, you got that?
You heard that?
Yeah, yeah. About two pages of notes the other night.
You got that text message.
So we're currently working with city management to develop a strategy to address those concerns, and that strategy will also include mobile app development and looking at ways of extending those services and information to the community. Performance measures, as you know, citywide initiative, all departments are working towards, but it's also just a smart way of running IT. And so it works out very nicely for us to be implementing those metrics, and we're looking forward to that.
Joanne?
Dan, just a quick question. You may not have this number off the top of your head, but just for curiosity, annually, what do you spend in license for software and things like that? Is that a pretty big number?
Do you have that number?
Yeah, I do.
They spend about six-hundred thousand. We have a little bit more in the budget, it just allows some flexibility, because they're not paid every year.
Oh, not every year?
Sometimes they pay once every three years, and as we get new applications online, you'll notice in the supplements, we normally won't have an additional ongoing cost, we'll push it to that line item.
What's, what's, I mean, I suppose this has been going on for ten years, having to do licensing or longer? I couldn't, couldn't, I don't know, think about how long that would be, maybe twenty years, I really don't know. But on average, you're saying six-hundred thousand this last year, but what would you say an average was? Is that normal, six-hundred thousand, you kind of plan every year at that?
Well, what, what I can answer is that approximately, I'm gonna say, three, four years ago, we centralized all that, before it was out in the departments. And so it was difficult to manage, difficult to, you know, establish a cost, and a lot of times, they would get the implementation of the project, and then that identify the cost, and then the bill would come in. So we've centralized that on, I think it's working well.
Absolutely.
But we're, yeah, like I said, we're averaging a little more than six-hundred thousand.
That's amazing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, we're working with engineering and development services to implement electronic plans review through the implementation of project docs, which was spoken about earlier this evening. Looking at our challenges and opportunities, first one is we have an opportunity to evaluate the city's cell phone and mobile device strategy, make sure that that's meeting our needs and that we're getting all the value out of those devices that we can. Also, we need to make sure that we're using all of the new capabilities and features of our phone system that we just upgraded, and make sure that we're getting all the value out of those investments. Another opportunity is to improve productivity and efficiencies through technology. Some examples of where we might be able to do that, clearly the ERP system would, would affect that, the electronic plans review, as we discussed, possibly the use of tablets for going paperless for a lot of processes. There's a lot of opportunity there. And then also, just looking at reducing the number of systems that we have and trying to use consolidated systems that all departments use instead of one system for every department. ERP is, would be a step in that direction as well. Improved IT service delivery model, there's kind of two approaches to managing IT services. One is operating under the assumption that IT needs to be rigid and provide stringent controls in order to make sure that things are safe and static. The other kind of approach is about partnering with your customers and trying to come up with, you know, a focus on customer service that results in creative solutions and more innovative ideas. And so I very much believe in the latter, and want to make sure that that is our focus as a department. It's not to say anything negative about the way we've been doing things, it's just a mindset focused on customer service that I think will help lead us into the future. We hear lots of technology needs, and I think this is the way that we're gonna be able to, to bridge the gap on where we're at to where we need to be. Upgrade city website, as I mentioned on a previous slide, we understand this to be a challenge for us and something we need to address, but it's listed here as an opportunity, because it's a great chance for us to better communicate with our citizens, to get more information out there, and to better reach the community. And so we're very excited about this effort. One area that we've seen great success with in the past is with the asset replacement program that was put in place a few years ago. This program helps us by replacing aging systems and reduces the number of issues that users have to deal with because of an old or dilapidated system. So this has been a very successful program, and hopefully we can continue that if funding exists.
Joe?
On the asset replacement, are we, are we talking about now, and I know there was a point in time where trying to keep track of all the computers within the system, date them when they came onboard, and then being able to replace them periodically, you had money at one time for a replacement, and it used to be three years, I don't know what it is now, you know, as you're replacing all those, is that, was that what you're talking about?
Yes, Councilmember Pizzillo, we have a five-year lifecycle on those assets today, and they are tracked in a database, and so every year we know what that replacement fund looks like.
As a follow-up on that, it's probably more for Terry as far as asset replacement. Do we have a program in place that kind of tracks all of our capital assets from a depreciation standpoint, so we get an idea on our replacement fund, whether we are funding it at a proper level or, or not?
Councilmember Pizzillo, yes, we just, we do do the rolling stock and the large equipment, and we've just recently incorporated some of the, any asset over five thousand dollars, which will now be pulled into that. And you'll see that coming before you again as some one-time money for the, the replacement of some vehicles and large equipment this upcoming budget year.
So we have a better handle now on, on how much money it takes regularly to, to be, to hit the scheduling when those, when that equipment becomes due to be replaced?
We do. We were at about eighty percent, and for the upcoming next couple of years, we are falling a little bit below that, and it's primarily due to the priority of police and the public safety being the top priority. We are looking out in the future of perhaps having to increase that one-time money to get closer to fully funding everything.
Okay, thank you.
On the challenges side, we've got security listed. This is a constant concern, something that we always have to keep.
This is a constant concern, something that we always have to keep an eye on and try to stay ahead of. There aren't any immediate concerns or threats that we're worried about, but it is something that we always have to keep an eye on since it is such a dynamic situation. And then, lastly, staff retention. The market is very competitive right now for IT talent in the valley, and we just want to put some proactive strategies in place to make sure that that doesn't become an issue for us. It hasn't been, and it isn't, but we just want to get ahead of that and make sure that it doesn't become a problem for us. And with that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Sherry?
With the changes in technology, and you talked about the phone system, I know we have a reverse 911, but there was an incident, I know, with some, the water system a while ago, and that went to probably people's home phones, and so many people have cellular. I know a lot of universities and stuff do a text notification. Is that something our phone system can do?
Councilmember Lord, so I just want to make sure I understand the question. So, you want to know if we could text?
People, just as citizens rather than call their home phones and leave messages?
There are systems that will allow that. It's not my understanding that we currently have that capability.
Oh, okay.
Is that a somewhat more advanced capability? Is that why?
SMS or text messaging is typically a standalone system designed for mass communication purposes. So, there's services that will do it. There's also in-house systems that will do that, but it would be a separate investment.
Thank you. Bill?
Dan, I appreciate seeing the city's system security issue. I know at the National League of Cities, one of the things that we spent a great deal of time hearing about was cyber threats, and that it is a challenge that the hacker is trying to get into everywhere. So, I'm glad that, to see that there, number one. Number two, that you and everybody has heard our concern about the website and the computer replacement program, the enterprise system, that that remains a high priority. It's, it's good, and then to actually see this in a presentation, it kind of reinforces it all. So, I just want to let you know, I appreciated that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Next in our final presentation is from Parks and Recreation, Nathan Torres.
It's my pleasure to be here this evening and present our FY13 budget presentation for the Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Department consists of several elements: parks, recreation, art, ballpark maintenance, ballpark business operations, of course, the library by way of contract with our partners with Maricopa County. Parks and Recreation includes all of these areas. In terms of fitting into the strategic goal for the city...
Who'd you steal that from? There's your real cyber threat.
That's right. That's right. She had permission. But really, the strategic goal for the city and the council's goals and city management's goals align perfectly with Parks and Recreation. It fits like a glove. In terms of economic vitality, you know, we contribute there through our spring training efforts. You know, we attracted 147,000 fans this past year. I'll talk to you a little bit more about that here soon. But also, our non-spring training efforts, all of our events that happen outside of spring training, and we're serving as an economic driver. We're putting heads in beds through these events, and they're driving business for the local businesses, both restaurants and retail and all around. So, we're definitely having an impact on economic vitality. The other thing, our programs, the quality of the Parks and Recreation programs as they exist today, not only help retain current residents and businesses, but they also are recruiting tools for the same. And so, quality Parks and Recreation, again, contribute to economic vitality. In terms of quality of life, our programs provide those opportunities, our facilities provide those opportunities to really contribute to healthy lifestyles and contribute to overall quality of life. In addition to the programs and facilities, we also contribute to the beautification of the city. So, people that are driving through the city, they'll notice that our right-of-ways are well-maintained, our city facilities and parks are also very pristine. In terms of sense of community, Parks and Recreation builds community, and we, our programs and facilities offer that, whether it's Little League programs, or dance programs, or our large citywide events, Fourth of July, our gain, our holiday events, provide opportunities for the community to come together. In terms of fiscal and resource management, everything we do is fiscally and resource management appropriate, from our green waste initiatives, using our green waste recycling program to save dollars, to our contract with Perryville that provides very cheap inmate labor to help maintain our areas. So, again, Parks and Recreation sits at the center and plays an active role in all of the strategic planning for the city.
I'd like to interject something. It's not only does that at the inmates, but it actually trains them in a career field. So, I think the goal that you're doing is very admirable, and I know that there are many that are incarcerated that would love to learn certain trades, to prepare them when they're released. And so, this is one way that we're helping. They need much more help than we're giving them at this time, but I just think it's kudos to us as a city that not only they're keeping our city pristine, but that we are giving them somewhat of a future.
Joe?
Just as a follow-up, Nathan, a while back, we talked about that mitigated water, but we needed some infrastructure that could save us potentially significant amounts of money, you know, using that to water the ball fields, et cetera. Are we anywhere closer to that?
We are, and I will hit that a little bit later here in the presentation.
Okay.
As an opportunity.
Okay.
And Mayor Lord, members of the council, there are many success stories regarding inmates and participants in the program that have gone on to, you know, work in the field of landscape maintenance. And so, it is truly a mutual benefit.
Yeah.
Partnership. Our total budget for FY13, $8,063,000, and that's comprised of three primary areas: the stadium, which is $3.8 million; that accounts for 47% of the overall budget; recreation, aquatics, and art, $1.4 million; that's 18%; and parks, which is 35% of the overall $8 I had some pictures on there.
Oh, well, nice.
Not sure where they went. But at any rate, Parks Division Administration, this is led by Mr. Jeremy Figueroa, who's in attendance tonight. Parks budget is $2.8 million. That consists of 19 full-time staff members, which is 46% of the operating budget. Other large consumers within this budget are 11% for landscape services. That's our contract with Mariposa to maintain certain right-of-ways and the trees that we maintain within the city. And the third-largest consumer is 31% for utilities. You know, water continues to be probably our most expensive commodity, and that totals $650,000 annually. In terms of opportunities, we'll talk about that a little bit later, but we will see some savings as a result of remediated water project that was facilitated by Public Works. Parks Division Services, combined, we have 17 parks. That combines for 206 total acres. We also maintain right-of-way and medians throughout the city, 23 million square feet of right-of-ways, and we also support additional city facilities landscaping around the fire stations and other facilities as well.
Joanne?
Nathan, I know the skate park is used continually, and it's a success. I'm not over there enough to actually know the water feature. Is that used quite a bit? I just never there to see and don't have those aged children anymore, so...
Vice Mayor Osborne, members of the council, the splash pad is very heavily used and in high demand. We are scheduled to open the splash pad April 15th, and people are lined up already waiting for it to be opened.
So, that's, it's good to know that wherever we put something like that somewhere else in the city will also be used.
Very, very popular. Probably one of our single-most popular amenities within our system.
Actually, isn't that part of the Loma Linda Plan too, that park? Wasn't there some kind of water feature that was, instead of having that little tot pool, didn't we? I think that was part of that.
There is discussion, and it was placed on a plan, and it was several phases out.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you.
Some of the core services that Jeremy and the crews are responsible for: turf management. They maintain over 125 acres of turf, irrigation systems, which includes backflow, compliance testing, of course, custodial services, arboreal management, trees and shrubs. We have several thousand trees within our system, and that's minus the four that council member Campbell pointed out here recently that had succumbed to the bark beetle. But we have several thousand trees within our system and two certified arborists to help us maintain those trees. We have four lakes, various sports fields, courts, athletic areas. We maintain 17 playgrounds that all are compliant and tested for national playground safety standards. And then, of course, all the amenities within the park, the benches, the fences, the lighting. We also perform contract administration for the Perryville contract as well as the landscaping contract. And then, our staff engages in plan review, design, and construction of facilities, and we also work with the engineering department in reviewing of future landscaping plans. The Parks Division received two supplementals last year. One was a $50,000 increase to cover additional rising costs for water, and that has this trending on target for the remainder of this year. The second supplemental was for the Bullard Wash cleanup, and that's a $20,000 supplemental. We are in the process of implementing a new strategy to deal with a more permanent solution, dealing with the Bullard Wash and the clearing of those irrigation, or those flow channels. And we are engaging Maricopa County, the McFlood District, to create an IGA that we will be bringing forward that will allow us to utilize them to clear these channels. They have the resources in place, and they're available, and they're interested in supporting us in these efforts. And we're looking forward to this long-term plan, and it will result in some cost savings as well. The Recreation Division, which is led by our new recreation supervisor, David Side, consists of two operating areas. The budget itself is $1.4 million. 33% of that is applied to the aquatics, and 67% is applied to the Recreation Division. The Recreation Division has five full-time positions, and personnel represents 57% of the overall operating budget for recreation. However, it's important to note that 269,000, or 33%, is in the part-time staff category. So, these are our frontline employees that are out at the fields or out at the programs, making a positive impact in our community. Another large expenditure in the recreation budget is the YMCA subsidy, and this year, that subsidy came in, we just got it in, and it came in at $218,000. You know, the YMCA is doing some great things under the leadership of Barbara LeKowitz and her staff there. They, this year alone, in 2012, when we talk about impact to economic vitality, they had, they actually hosted six large USA swim meets. And these swim meets last several days, and they attract anywhere from 250 to 500 kids per meet. And of course, these kids and swimmers bring families and relatives in with them, and so, they are also contributing to economic vitality in a big way, and we're very proud of their efforts at the YMCA.
And the Olympians that come to the Y too. I mean, it's really, puts Goodyear in a good light across the nation when people are talking swimming. They certainly will know this area.
Councilmember Osborne, members of the council, I believe we had four or five that actually, from our YMCA, that actually went on to pre-trials for USA swims. So, that's a big accomplishment, and that's good recognition for Goodyear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jennifer?
Thank you. Nathan, I wonder if you could just take a second and talk about the collaborations you have where you do save a lot of money? And what I mean by that is I know that we had a collaboration where with a nonprofit, you were able to reduce some of the fees that you pay for use of gyms and that kind of thing, and you also work with schools, you know, to save our residents' money when they sign up for programs. So, I was wondering if you could just briefly?
Correct. We, you know, the, in order to continue to deliver the best service possible while maintaining prices, it's partnership, 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 and we've really demonstrated that. One is partnering with Arizona in Action to receive nonprofit status for rental of facilities for schools. So, instead of paying top-tier rate, we are paying the nonprofit rate, which does save us a substantial amount of money. The other thing we have done is we have partnered with the Arizona Special Olympics to provide adaptive programs to those that are in need of adaptive programming. And what this has done is, rather than having to add a full-time expert resource with adaptive programming experience, we're utilizing this contract, and it's at no cost to us, and we're actually providing opportunities within our community. So, it's a win-win. Recreation Core Services, I've mentioned a few. Summer Recreation, it's always a favorite. It was mine growing up as a kid. Youth and adult sports, enrichment programs, dance, music, martial arts, senior programming. We're seeing significant increase in our, in our active adult community, and so, whether it's senior trips or their gathering for buncow, we have a very active senior program, and the staff with that program has done fantastic. Aquatics, of course, learn to swim. We have recreational swim and dive teams. Of course, our special events that we talked about. We also provide facility rentals and field management rentals. In terms of art, we're still growing our art programs, but some examples are the hot coffee and the chalk and the art programs, and of course, the adaptive programs that we, that I just mentioned in partnership with Special Olympics.
Bill?
Nathan, with the art program, have we incorporated that just overall now into the Recreation Division and putting more responsibility on the art commission as opposed to having a public art specialist on staff? Is that an efficiency that you found?
Actually, we took some time. We had the arts position become vacant when Diane Kreip left. We took some time, massaged that position, and really looked at how we could best tie that position into the overall city's strategic goal of being a hub for the arts. And we looked at it from a grassroots level and a public art standpoint. And the position, we will fill. It should be posting here within the next week. We do plan on seeing that position come back, and it will report directly to the director, and will focus on arts programming, but also public art as well.
I just want to make sure that it's also tied to economic development. Will we tie that to economic development to also to help create and promote?
We will definitely explore that opportunity with Mayor and council in the future.
Okay.
And I believe it's the art and private development opportunities that might exist. And I believe it's the art and private development opportunities that might exist.
Yes, Ryan.
Mayor, just to finish up on that. Arts and private development would be a function within Development Services, but again, working closely with the Parks and Recreation Department. There absolutely is some, one of the thing evaluations that we looked at in terms of where this position should reside. And it is something that will be incorporated as we go forward with Development Services.
Thank you. Does somebody else have a question here? Joanne?
Well, it's not really a question and I'll wait.
The good news is last year we had approximately 14,000 participants in our programs. We are seeing increases and we're projected to see 17,000 people in our programs this coming year. Girls volleyball continues to be a thriving and growing sport. Our senior programs are growing. The Fan Fest event that we just had with the Arizona Diamondbacks and Little League itself. So there are opportunities there and we're excited to see our programs grow.
Joe?
Nathan, I had a couple of people approach me and again, I'm not that familiar with the sport, but pickleball, are you hearing anything about pickleball out there?
Just about every day, Councilmember Pazillo. It definitely is a growing sport. We did actually convert one of our tennis courts. I don't want to use convert, but we adapted one of our existing tennis courts at Goodyear Community Park. And it can now be used for pickleball. And so it serves dual purpose. And we do have a strong pickleball contingent that's growing in Goodyear.
Okay, no, I appreciate that because I didn't know, to be honest with you, I must have missed that we had converted. But that'll make a couple of people I know happy that have been asking about pickleball, so.
And we have a bocce court yet?
We don't have bocce yet, but we are exploring these opportunities through our Parks Master Plan.
You can use pretend grass, you don't have to have the real stuff. Or sand.
Parks and Recreation Division highlights and opportunities. Of course, this year we participated on two, with two revenue or renovation projects, Parker de Paz and Palmetier renovations. This provides the opportunity for us to explore future grant opportunities as well. The community garden at Parker de Paz has been a very, very big success and largely in part to the efforts of our park staff, but also the residents that have really taken ownership of that area. So this community garden will be the model for us moving forward with our community garden efforts. So it's something we're very proud of. Of course, the Special Olympics partnership that we talked about earlier. The remediated groundwater project that was primarily driven by the Public Works Department or the Department formerly known as Public Works. And what that basically did is provide a free water source, remediated water source for the Goodyear Community Park. So we're looking forward to those savings. We also launched the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. We're heavily engaged in the Parks Master Plan, strategic planning. We have a complete Loma Linda Parks Master Plan. This is a great example of a private-public partnership with St. John Vianney. And we look forward to potentially taking that to the next level, that project. In terms of opportunities, we are in the process of dusting off our current IGAs with the school districts and seeing what opportunities exist there. We're heavily engaged in developing an asset replacement program, asset planning program. And then, of course, something that we hope to explore here in the coming fiscal year would be a volunteer ranger program. And, you know, this is just some brainstorming ideas among staff. And there may be some tie-in with Chief, Police Chief and the VIPs program. But we look forward to taking that dialogue further.
Joanne?
Well, I appreciate the thought with the IGAs in the schools. And the reason I say that today is because just this morning I was reading the National League of Cities. It was about youth education and families. And there was a section in there highlighting for cities to reach out to their school districts and to have these IGAs. And I was thinking, we've been doing this for years and years. And I was just kind of surprised that there's still cities that don't think that way, you know, to do those collaborations. So I appreciate that. I know sometimes they're not always easy, but it's good that might as well use those facilities, you know?
Absolutely. And, you know, the schools recognize that our residents that we're serving are also their students and families.
Right.
And so it definitely is a win-win.
I know you have a Parks Master Plan and you have strategic planning there. I know we do not have the funding. And I'm sure we really haven't evaluated the need. But I do know that from our last citizen survey, after-school programming was something that was top of the list. And I just don't want to ever lose sight that that is something our citizens have certainly said that they desire. We have a lot of hurdles to get through to ever reach that, but I just want to make sure that it's not lost sight of. Okay?
Thank you.
I'll add on this. Yeah, after-school programming and summer program, because I was recently looking for summer camps. And you'll be really surprised how little is in the West Valley and especially Goodyear in choices there are for parents. Most of the items are in the East Valley. I know we don't have the funding now, but that would be something that parents look for when these kids are off for eight to 10 weeks in the summer to have different choices close to home.
Great.
Any other questions? Good. Did you have another question? No.
Mayor and Council, thanks for those comments and we will definitely include those in our plans going forward. In terms of challenges for parks, you know, one of our single largest challenges is, of course, maintaining our current assets. And they're in such high demand and they're heavily used. And so, and they're getting older. And so how do we plan and how do we maintain, ensure that our facilities are pristine, presentable, clean and safe? So that's probably one of our biggest challenges, how we deal with O&M repair, the rising costs of facility maintenance from cracked cement, cracked sidewalks. How do we replace, you know, get the Ramada painted that's probably, you know, faded or, you know, the park benches that are a little outdated. So that continues to be one of our largest challenges. In terms of horticulturally and landscape, you know, how do we maintain our current standards with regards to vegetation and granite in our right-of-way? And that continues to be a challenge for us. You know, we lose trees here and there and we lose vegetation, either naturally or by way of insects or whatever the reason is. How do we maintain those and maintain our current standards regarding vegetative and granite programs? So that continues to be a challenge for us. And then fleet equipment. You have to have the right tools for the right job. And, you know, our fleet is aging. And it is a challenge for us from time to time to maintain our standards and to operate as efficiently as possible with an aging fleet. So, you know, fleet really is the heartbeat for your entire operation on the maintenance side. If you have a good fleet, you can get in and out of areas quickly and perform the maintenance very quickly.
Joanne?
I have a quick question. I've seen in different parks over the years where they have memorial benches or trees or there might even be a little dog drinking fountain for Fido with his best friend that he, you know, some citizen donated. I was just wondering, I know in Litchfield Park, I think it was Turtle Park, there was actually a donated beautiful water fountain and for the dog, you know? And I was just wondering, have we ever considered, you know, asking our own residents, would you like to, you know, put something in that in that park? Because some parks are very special to people, you know?
We actually have engaged in that, particularly at Parker de Paz, where it's a very active, active community. There are, there's a garden memorial, there is a plaque. There is also a tree that will be going in soon for a resident that was very active in the community and then has passed. But in terms of an overall program, we don't have that developed yet. But we can certainly add that to our list to explore.
Well, it's just a thought. I mean, if somebody is willing, because they would love to have a tree in someone's name, then, you know,
Sure.
that would take the expense, I suppose.
I mean, if we have a goal at our parks and our need and a bench need and all those additional, I don't know what we have to set up to take that amount of contribution. So the behind the scenes, we'll have to work that out, but.
People volunteer to clean parks.
Yeah, and there's so many, you know, people to pass on that people, I just think about Gary, the number of the calls I got. People wanted to do something. They still do it, I mean, they talk, when I run into them around the region, they always say, "Well, he would love to have donated a bench with his name on it." And, you know, so, you know, we might explore. Thanks for bringing that up, Joanne. We might explore those avenues.
Mayor and Council, it's a great idea and we will definitely research that further.
But I think we have to set the criteria.
Right.
Otherwise, we have to set where and what and, you know, I think there has to be something rather than just anything, you know?
Absolutely. Onto the Ballpark Division. 3.8 million, the Ballpark Division has led, the business office broken down into two operational areas. The first area is the Maintenance Division and that's led by Mr. Scott Dobbins. And the second area is the Business Operations and that's led by Debbie DeVini. The Maintenance Operation consumes 71%, about 2.7 of the overall 3.8 million. And Business Operations consumes 28%, about 1 million of the overall 3.8 million. As a whole person.
Bill, excuse me, Bill?
Oh, I was going to wait for him to finish.
As a whole Personnel Services for the department, for the division is 53% of the overall budget. Eighteen percent of Personnel Services budget is part-time staff. So $375,000 is utilized for part-time and seasonal staff. Another big consumer driver for the budget is utilities. And utilities represent 17% of the overall maintenance budget. Water being the largest driving factor. 320,000 per year and then electric, about 220,000. In terms of full-time staff within the Ballpark Division, there are 24 full-time staff. We also utilize well over 200 volunteers throughout the year. These volunteers contribute approximately 9,000 hours annually. And that's a net savings to the city of about $180,000 per year.
Are you ready, Bill, for your question? Bill?
Nathan, and maybe this is more for Terry. The 3.8 is just operating budget. That obviously does not include the general fund contribution.
Councilmember Sipp, it is the contributions in there. What you're not seeing is the debt service. So this is everything to operate the Ballpark 365.
So, but the debt service payment that the general fund makes to the ballpark is located elsewhere?
Right. That's correct.
Is there, is there a strategy that, I mean, obviously because it's debt service, I'm guessing that you don't want to mix the two. But, you know, looking at this, at 3.8, you go, oh, it's only 3.8. We don't even talk about the.
The debt.
The $5 million debt or whatever that, you know, 4. whatever is. So is there a budgeting rationale behind that?
There is. And over the next month, we'll be coming back with you with different components of the budget. We usually break it down into operations. We'll bring forward to you the capital component of that. And then there is the contingency that we talk about, the rainy day fund, plus the proposed appropriations set aside in the event we should have development activity or an opportunity there. And then the debt is the fourth component.
And you don't want to mix that in the reporting? Is that basically what you're saying?
Right. We usually have the discussion separate for each of those categories.
Joe?
It's separate, but isn't debt part of the same fund just paid with a different line item?
You are correct, Councilman Pazillo. As far as the total expenditures for that fund, it would show up under the Ball Stadium. We do transfer the money from the general fund into this fund.
Yeah, and I think that's what you're getting to there, Councilwoman Sipp.
You know, if I.
You may.
And I guess what I'm kind of struggling with this is in each one of our operating budgets, we have a line item, I guess is the best way to describe it, that if you, if you have a department that has a fleet, you get charged in your budget, you're charged a fleet, surcharge, an expense that goes back to, you know, it's a, we charge ourselves for the service that we provide? Before I go, is that a correct, that's a correct statement, is it?
That is correct. And then that funding helps offset fleet operations, which is an internal service fund.
Right. So if we do, if we go through that motion, why then don't we charge the Ballpark Division with its debt service to show what it really is costing us?
Well, it is an enterprise, so I understand your point.
Councilmember Sipp, the total expenditures for the Ballpark run right around 9.3. And again, there's a four, composed four categories of budgeting, if you will. And operations, as Nathan said, runs around three and then the debt is right a little over 5 million.
So in the, yeah, and I get that. I'm just trying to say if we're looking at this and we're using general fund money, we should, to me, it's makes a lot of common sense, which is probably, it's wrong. But it, and I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but it just, you know, to kind of show that holistically, this is what it costs us. It doesn't cost us 3.8 for an operating budget, it costs us, add five to that, it costs us 8.8.
For total expense for the ballpark.
Yeah, for total expense.
Yeah, that is correct. It's right around 9.3 for last year.
Maybe it's six to one, half dozen to another, I don't know.
Wally, are you there? Maybe she's hung up.
Yes, thank you, I'm there.
Thank you for responding. Did you get your explanation that is satisfying you or, I mean, I'm not quite sure where we're at right now.
It's like six to one, half dozen to another. Maybe it doesn't matter, maybe it does matter, I don't know. I don't want to make any, we're counting for it, so it's not like we're hiding it.
But is it maybe something that in the explanation part of the budget book, you know, how you explain within the written or typewritten part of each department? I don't know.
Mayor, we will be addressing this. I'm thinking, I know last year we brought back to you specifically the enterprise funds. And at that time, it is the whole picture. So we will include both the revenue side, because you want them to balance out. It's the revenue side, including the transfers in, which would be the support for that debt payment as well as the debt payment. But it comes at a later conversation when we're talking at the fund level.
I guess you're just looking at this slide and saying it's not tried and true. That's, that number's not true.
Yeah, it's true of the operating budget.
In your opinion, as far as the having that asset.
And I'm trying to make it simple for, I mean, I get it. So it's not for me, but it's for the person who looks at this and says, oh, it's only.
Exactly. It's only 3.8 million when that's not exactly correct.
I love it the way we say only.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor, and I'd also add similarly for the other enterprise funds, you get into water, wastewater, sanitation. So we bring them all together. But when you look at the operational expenses, they are segregated from the debt service, et cetera. So, but you will see them all together in other presentations.
In terms of Ballpark, the campus 103 acres, the stadium 10,311, although we fit 11,023 in there this year, don't tell anyone. But anyway, 103 acre site, you've seen this, I won't get into too much details. But, you know, the clubhouse is the 12 full-size practice fields in addition to the half fields and agility fields. The Ballpark Maintenance Core Services, of course, Major League Baseball turf athletic fields to Major League Baseball standards. The grass has to lean, lean the right way, of course. And it is a science, it truly is. And we have the best out there in our crews. That's the Major League Baseball infield and pitching mounds, irrigation maintenance. We also maintain the recreational fields that also serve as parking lots around the ballpark throughout the year. The horticulture and landscape medians and right of ways surrounding the ballpark, lake maintenance, fleet and equipment maintenance and custodial services.
Well, you certainly rate high on the ownership of Cincinnati Reds, Cleveland Indians, because they were very verbal about that and how much they appreciate the condition of everything and how well it's kept up. And I really think that reputation has gone beyond our stadium now to the other stadiums. We've sort of set a level of expectations that other people would like to achieve. So congratulations to.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. We like to consider ourselves, you know, not, not setting the trends, but setting the standards. And so we're not following someone else's trends. We're actually setting the standards. And that's a testimony to the staff that we have in place, but also the cities, the city as a whole. On the business operations side, budget forecasting, performance strategies, ticket sales strategies, concessions, marketing, novelties, game day operations, we work very, very closely with police and traffic management. And then, of course, our non-spring training business, which is facility rentals. Opportunities and highlights, of course, we're just wrapping up this spring training, this year's spring training. We had a fantastic year, record-breaking for Goodyear. We attracted 146,000 fans this year. That's up 6% compared to last year. It's important to note that last year we were 22% ahead of the previous year. So within the past two years, we're well over 30% compared to 2011. These are good numbers and it's reflective of the work that the staff is doing and our partnership with the teams. We grossed 4.7 million. So it's, it's simple math. You increase attendance, your revenues go up in all categories. And so we had, our gross revenues went up, went to 4.7 million. That's, that's gross revenue. And that's up 6% compared to the year before. Some other highlights regarding spring training. We were voted the best place to see a spring training game by the Phoenix New Times for 2010 and 2012. And that's a great accomplishment, two times in four years in our early existence. And there are 10 other facilities that compete for that as well. But we also have won best overall sponsorship program internationally, not just in the nation. And we compete with entities like the Rose Bowl, little events like the Super Bowl. And in 2012, we actually didn't win best overall. We were runner-up. But still, it's, it's good competition to be in and it's great to be recognized nationally and internationally. We continue to set records in all areas. We launched, there's been a lot of talk about our website or about the city's website. And we view our, the city website or the ballpark website as our greatest marketing tool. And so this year, we actually designed, Deb DeVini led it, working with IT. And we launched the new website, goodyearvp.com. And it's very interactive, ties closely to Facebook and Twitter and is a great marketing tool for us.
How many weddings did we have today this year?
Geez, Mayor members of the council, I believe we had four weddings at home plate this year.
Just before the games, I think it's so great. Joe?
Hi, Nathan, just a couple out of, do we know yet where we rank out of the 14 teams?
It looks like we will still, you know, as a facility, we're probably seven, six out of 10. Our teams, the Indians and the Reds are probably, are still on the lower end in terms of average. We look at things as a whole and look to see that we're growing attendance each year is our goal. And I think we're taking strides. We're moving in the right direction. The teams are working closely with us to help attract the Ohio fans. It is challenging to get the Ohio fans here. It's, it's a long trip and it's an expensive trip. But we will continue to work with the teams to promote within their stadiums and work with the Arizona Office of Tourism to get the word out about Goodyear and get people coming to Goodyear.
Well, I think there's other, other attributes that we will, along the way, that we'll have as soon as we start the development around the ballpark. Because people want entertainment. And so, you know, it's, it's part on our shoulders to have to create this and to draw the people wanting to come and stay longer. So I, you know, it's not all on just the stadium part. It's on the part of the city and the developers to come to the table and let's get this going. You know, it's time now. So, Joe?
Also, you mentioned $4 million worth of gross. Do you know what the net was?
We're still breaking those percentages down. The numbers are still very raw and un-audited at this point.
Last question is, here's maybe where my opportunity comes into place. That 300,000 of potential savings to the water, what's an update on that?
We are exploring the, again, this is, Public Works is, is driving the, this. And they have made some significant strides. They have cleared a couple of hurdles. The first hurdle is getting approval from ADWR to utilize the water.
Right.
And the second hurdle was getting an agreement in place with the supplying entity. And that is, I believe, wrapped up and in the process. Our last hurdle now is getting the pipeline to the lake.
Okay.
And we have submitted for, we're considering supplemental funding right now as part of the CIP project to get that done.
Yeah, I'm very interested in that project because that could save us considerable money on our O and M. So thank you for the update. Keep me apprised of where we are there. I appreciate it.
Bill?
Nathan, you mentioned heads and beds earlier. Do you have any way of figuring out, making a connection between the ballpark and our hotel industry?
Yes, we do. Councilmember Stipp, Mayor, members of the council. The Cactus League recently engaged in two economic impact studies that measured the impact of spring training and as well as measuring the impact of non-spring training events. I can give you, share some highlights with you now, but we are planning on bringing these studies back at a future date. But just to hit a couple of highlights, the Cactus League as a whole study found that 55%, 56% of those fans attending spring training were from out of state. And so they're requiring room nights. It's tough to dial down where those rooms are being kept. But that industry is driving $422 million annually, just spring training alone from, from visitors coming to see spring training. Another study was performed by Elliott and Pollak. And the goal of the Cactus League was to measure the economic impact for ballparks and stadiums outside of spring training. Particularly looking at the team spends throughout the year. You know, they're here, they have considerable budgets, they're, they're spending. But also learning more about our events and which events are attracting outside visitors. That study that was just completed this year indicated that outside of spring training, the 10 spring training facilities are driving $210 million of additional economic impact. If we look at Goodyear in particular, related to that $210 million number, Goodyear is driving 18% as a whole of that number. So we're very proud of that. If we're looking at it from an event standpoint, there's $83 million out of all 10 facilities that are driving economic impact through heads and beds and bringing people from outside the area. So there's $83 million worth of business among the 10 facilities. Of that $83 million, Goodyear is competing very, very well in that market and we're driving 22% of that $83 million number. So we look to bring these numbers back to you in more detail in the coming months as we debrief on spring training and the impact and really drill into these studies because there's some great information there for us to share.
I guess I'm specifically looking for what it did for us. And I'm wondering if we've reached out or have the ability to reach out to Cooper Hospitality?
Copper.
Copper Hospitality? To see if, if, if they're willing to share if they've had even if, just an increase. I mean, I'd just like to hear that, not even the numbers.
Actually answer that too, because actually that's the tourism study that we are in. April 27th will be the final day. It will have been a year-long study. And, and those hotels have been within that, that study. And so, go ahead, Nathan, add to it, but I know that that information will be coming soon. Now, obviously, it's going to, you know, peak up during the, the month of March and end of February. We also will have PIR within there, but I think some of that information will come out.
Okay, that's good enough for right now. Thanks.
Councilmember Stipp, Mayor Lord, members of the council. You know, if you ask the, the business community, the restaurants and the hoteliers, and we're, we're very connected with them, either through sponsorship or other partnerships, they will tell you that, that spring training is indeed a peak time for them.
Well, and the other thing is with the trades the Cleveland Indians made this year and the money they spent, there might be a winning team out there. So as I told both ownerships, and what do you need? I said, we need a winning team. It's going to draw your Ohio people here. No matter what, they're going to show up. So, so I guess it's on their shoulders too, right?
Mayor members of the council, absolutely. And they have, they leave here with high hopes of, of, of competing for the World Series.
And we have those hopes with them.
Absolutely. Ballpark Division operational challenges, you know, we just completed our fifth year. So O and M repair will be an upcoming challenge for us. We do have a, a, a facility's fund for that. That's funded by way of ticket surcharges. And so that, that helps us maintain and, and helps the ballpark look pristine. But there will become a time where, where, you know, the facility will start to age and that will be a challenge for us. And of course, we have some of the same challenges with our rolling fleet and, you know, mowers and things like that. Competition for events is, is heavy. There's 10-like facilities. And so we continue to compete for those events and adjust to, you know, promoters and tournament promoters' needs. Another challenge, of course, is increased tourism attendance. That's always at the forefront for us. And we look forward to working with the teams, economic development and all others to help promote and promote the industry of tourism for spring training.
Joe?
It's probably more of a question for the city manager. As we move forward with the Tourism and Sports Authority, are there any new updates possibly coming down the road as far as scheduling of payments towards, you know, our spring training facility? And the second thing is, I always hear about the state talking about, and again, even Nathan, how Cactus League is, is a big, you know, boom for the state as a whole. And I'm wondering if there's any efforts down at our state legislature to try to look at the funding sources. Because, you know, over time, you know, these, these stadiums are going to need to be refurbished and et cetera. Are they looking at any long-range plans to try to figure out how the state may assist in, you know, dealing with our Cactus League from a financing standpoint?
Yeah. Councilmember Pizzillo, I'll take the first part of that question. And Nathan, I think you can probably answer the second part of that as far as what's ahead of us perhaps with state initiatives. First part of the question, we were supposed, we are to receive $75 million in reimbursements from Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. That's for the ballpark and the Cleveland Indians complex. In addition, if monies are available, we would then begin to get some reimbursements for the Reds facility. That came in a year later. Original projections for that $75 million to start getting reimbursements back to us. And again, this is from state or tourism dollars for hotels and car rentals. That's the funding sources for Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. Also, the county stadium district provides their revenues, same revenues from car rentals to Sports and Tourism Authority to distribute. 2017, we were told, of course, and council's been briefed, that will not happen. So it got moved to about 2022 because of some refundings, refinancings, I should say. Both the County Stadium District as well as Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. That looks like we should get, could get funding reimbursements as early as 2018. So that's the last we've heard. They look at it each and every year. So it's a lot better news than we had about a year ago.
Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. And then the second part?
Councilmember Pizzillo, Mayor, members of the council, just to follow up with that. I sit on the Cactus League Board as one of their vice presidents. And under new leadership, one of our, our single most important efforts is to advance funding for Cactus League through AZSTA. And so the Cactus League is already in the process of pursuing initiatives at the state level to look for alternative sources of funding within the state for AZSTA. Accordingly, as well as hopefully get them extended past 2031, so they don't sunset at that time. So that is the, the single biggest, I guess, that's our single biggest initiative right now is the Cactus League as a whole.
Yoan?
And actually, that was brought up yesterday. Nathan and I were at the Southwest Valley Chambers Business Retention and Tourism Meeting. And our consultant who helps with the Prop 302 monies was discussing that actual issue. And I don't know, I don't know enough about it at this point, but I understand where it's going to help Cactus League tourism, but at the same time, the way I was understanding it from her is that it was actually stealing tourism dollars in another way. And so I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work out.
I think it's very, very premature on, on where the additional funding sources would come from. The Cactus League would seek, they understand that for, for long-term sustainability of the league as a whole and the success of the cities who have made these investments is that we look for alternative funding for AZSTA. And so that, that is our effort and it's, it's very premature to discuss where those additional resources would come from.
You know, I think the, the highlight of it all is that maybe they're finally perking their ears up that tourism means something to the state and it's, it's time to put that money back in its investment.
That's great. When you, when you look at it from a holistic perspective and you see as a whole, spring training and non-spring training, these facilities are, are contributing well over 600 million annually. That's a significant number and one that's hard to ignore. It truly is a business industry for the state.
I would just like to put a reminder out though to our citizens, we have a savings plan on this, right, Joe? Would you like to talk about that, Joe, just for a second?
No, I think, I mean, we'll have time, we'll have time to talk about that when it comes to budget time. But we are setting money aside every year that can be used when that debt payment comes in. So we do have a plan in place.
See, I just gave you the stage to, you know, since we call that Joe's Plan.
Well, it's financing everybody's plans.
Financing everybody's, but we kid Joe about that. So. Is that the end of the presentation?
This concludes the presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions if we haven't already.
Any questions at this point? No? Bill, you have that look on your face?
I would like to thank, I would like to thank Amy Lindsay for helping with the presentation this evening.
Now you have something. I can see the Michael. Overall, go ahead.
You know, the other night, I I gushed over the police department and everything that they had gone through. And over the last couple of, you know, trying to connect with the female side of the table. And, and it dawned on me as I went home and started thinking about, about things. And then looking at the presentations we had tonight, we have looked tonight at a number of departments that have undergone tremendous change. And eve, and particularly when I looked at Development Services, the building safety folks, the code enforcement folks have bounced around in two or three different places. So as much as I appreciate the chief and, and all his staff and everything that they've done, I think overall, all of our city employees really have put up with a tremendous amount of, of change and have been very resilient and very strong with it. And, and I think it would be remiss if I didn't correct myself and send my appreciation to everybody, because it's really, it's been tremendous.
I think also it starts out with our city manager who came up with this plan and the council who said, okay, we're buying into this and we're going to let you do this. So I think the fact that you've allowed him to do this, you haven't gotten your fingers in on this and let him, you know, we believed in him and he did it and it's still ongoing. And I agree. and I agree. For the staff, I think it, you can't, it had to cause a little bit of anxiety here and now, not knowing what the change is and what direction, and I mean, so I, I do applaud our staff for being able to be resilient during this time. But we can see, at this point, it's working, city manager, Dolkey, that we, we are moving in the right direction, that you had your vision for the city. So I, I have great expectations for this oncoming year, so we just thank you all for that.
Thank you, and a special thanks to staff, as was pointed out, because it's a whole bunch of folks that are putting their heart and soul into making this work. So thank you for recognition of staff as well. Appreciate it.
Do you have anything before I close this meeting? Nothing? Anybody in the council have anything? Okay, our next meeting, of course, is going to be Monday, April 8th. We'll have a work session at 5:00, and a council meeting at 6 o'clock.